Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 6:00 PM study session, Dearborn Heights Schools Traffic Assessment. Today is Tuesday, November 29th, 2022, and basically, as a council body, we decided to put this study session together so we could bring all the powers at B, whether it's people from within the city, different maybe department heads. We have our mayor here, we have our city attorney here, our engineering director, Mr. Davis here, our police chief is here, and of course, also wanted to have members of the audience.
Chief Brogan too.
Chief Brogan. I thought somebody fell. And we also have our fire chief here, Chief Brogan, so I wanted all the different interested parties to be here, including the residents of Dearborn Heights, so that we can have different input from the residents, from the city officials, from the council members, as to direction to try to keep our schools safe, our kids safe, and of course, our residents as a whole safe. A lot of it comes down to also the residents themselves, I'm talking about the adults that drive to be a lot more careful. I see it all the time around the schools, the different people, sometimes kids crossing, sometimes adults driving, texting on the phone, not paying attention. So that's what this particular meeting is all about. Now, is this meeting going to solve everything? Probably not. Probably not. I don't want to give you guys any type of false hope, but what we're looking to do is to get the process started, get the conversation started, and see which direction the city, the community as a whole, needs to go to help keep our kids safe, okay? To begin with, what I'm gonna do, I asked Chief Hart to go up because obviously, this is a traffic situation, so a lot of it starts with the police department, and then we'll go on and see which different department heads would like to have a comment, including some of the residents. I'll give you guys an opportunity to be able to speak, but I'm gonna have the chief start the conversation if you don't mind. Chief Hart? And this is not, you know, a formal meeting, it's, I just asked the chief to just speak to the residents from the heart of, like I said, things that can be done to take this thing in the right direction. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thanks for the three minutes notice there, Council Chair.
I know. But you know what? Chief, I figured this would go, you'll be able to speak from the heart, tell the issues that you've been concerned about as a police chief for many, many years.
Yeah, so 32 years of law enforcement, grew up next door here in Taylor, and still today, many of the concerns that we receive at the police department from our residents are concerns about people speeding down their streets, disobeying stop signs, cutting through traffic ways. So we have a limited number of resources to deploy in those areas, and our traffic bureau tracks those complaints and then makes them a priority for our traffic safety program here. So we continue through over three decades of law enforcement experience myself, is we see the same, this is my third community, so whether it's Novi or Celine or here in Dearborn Heights, I'll try to speak into this as much as I can. We, we've kind of lost our way, in my opinion, on caring about each other, because it can't always be somebody else. It can't always be somebody else that's speeding, that's texting and driving. I see people FaceTiming when I'm driving down I-94 to work. It can't always be somebody else. It starts with each one of us, and our responsibility to each other to obey all of the various traffic control orders that are in our communities, whether we're here in Dearborn Heights or we're driving through Dearborn or Redford or other communities, really, we have a tremendous responsibility for those that are around us to ensure that we're following the rules, that we're driving the speed limit, right? So certainly, we've had the tragic death of Joey, which then kicked off conversations with the mayor and our school superintendents, and we had our second meeting last Tuesday, it lasted almost two and a half hours, with a conversation with our school superintendents and other stakeholders. We had a couple attorneys involved, and the Inkster Police Department was there, about how can we start to look at a very serious manner in the safety around our schools? Our schools are in our neighborhoods, and there's those arrival and dismissal times. Since I've been here, we've had some very close calls, thank God they were, you know, minor incidents in school parking lots, but nonetheless, they could have been tragic, just like Joey's death was, right? And these things impact me to my core and the other women and men at the police department that are charged with keeping our community safe. So two and a half hours, we had some great dialogue with our school officials, and really, at the end of the day, the input from our school officials are, excuse me, it's 10% to 15% of the population of people who are dropping children off at school, who will not change their behavior unless the police department is directly involved with giving them a consequence. And now, I appreciated their candidness, and Roger, please correct me if, you know, I'm speaking out of turn here, but isn't that very sad? That 10% to 15% of the people are going to continue to engage in unsafe driving practices around our children and throughout our community? So that's what we're doing, we're deploying some additional resources around our schools, I've made it clear in communications to staff. And one thing that we're also looking, because it's not just around our schools, and I know that's our topic tonight, but taking a data-driven approach to both crime and traffic safety within our community, things that we're going to start looking at here at the police department moving forward. One of the reasons that I know that Chuck is here, and Chuck from the Transportation Improvement Association, I know in my background letter to city council, when I recommended that we contract with TIA, which is a very reputable firm that, of traffic engineers, they know the Michigan Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, I don't, that's kind of a specialty traffic engineering. There's three E's that we like to say in law enforcement to traffic safety. There's the engineering that goes behind the design of a roadway, the design of a subdivision, curb cutouts, and whatever it may be. Then there's an educational piece, which I feel the police department plays definitely a role in, that's why we engage in Safety Town and other things, and put out social media posts about traffic safety. And then the last one, of course, is enforcement. So when we contract with TIA and our partners there that are traffic engineers, that's why they're on the call this evening, is that's an area of expertise that's outside of what the role of a police officer is. So I appreciate council's support on that, I know that TIA is on the call this evening, but really, we just have to do a better job of taking care of each other and getting back to a time where we cared about each other, to the point where we're not speeding through the neighborhoods, we're not going through the red lights, that we're paying attention, we're driving defensively. One of the best lessons my dad ever taught me was about a bouncing ball. And when I was a young driver, and he said, "If you ever see a ball bounce in front of you driving down these streets, you better be on the brakes." And I remember kind of looking at my dad like, "What are you talking about, Dad?" He goes, "There's probably gonna be a kid right behind it." And I'll tell you what, I had a couple of those scary moments, because as children, that's what we're thinking about, playing with our friends, going after the ball so we can continue to play. And our responsibility as drivers of several thousand pound vehicles in our community, we have to constantly be thinking about where the danger is. And that's kind of my opening comments that I can come up with in about three minutes.
No, I appreciate that, Chief, thank you. Chief, in your experience, you know, nationwide, statewide, countywide, just experience-wide, what has worked, in addition to, of course, ticketing people? What items, I'm talking about like physical items have worked in terms of having better traffic situations around the schools? But before you answer that, if you could give me a second, I'd also like to commend a lot of different school board members, all of them were invited throughout the city, and I see different members of District 7, Crestwood School Board, and a couple different school boards here, so thank you very much for joining us. What physical element do you think would work? And where I'm going with this is, it's been said, you know, speed bumps, speed humps, traffic lights that flash on and off, schools and school zone, et cetera, et cetera. Because me and you talked about this, in a perfect world, people would pay attention, absolutely, I agree with you, Councilman.
Right. You know, people steal cars. We've had 177, 177 vehicles stolen in Dearborn Heights from January 1st until November 1st, right? People know you're not supposed to steal cars, but they steal them anyway. And the conversations that we've had with our school leaders are that regardless of how many signs you put up, how many speed signs you put up that flash when someone exceeds the speed limit, or flashing signs that say "school zone," "drive safe," right? Whatever the sign may be, there are still a large percentage of those parents that are engaging in that bad behavior that are totally gonna disregard those signs. I don't know what the solution is other than enforcement right now, based on two meetings, the last one being two and a half hours with our school leaders, on the behavior that they're seeing around their school campuses.
Chief, you know, I've always been the one believer in enforcement, but as a councilman, I've been, you know, sitting in court cases, I go sit with the magistrate, I watch things happening. What I don't understand is how we do the punishment side. We give fines instead of giving the fine and the points, making people, you know, and to me, schools are very important. Double the fines, no going to the magistrate saying, "I got a clean record." Hey, look, you're going too fast in a school zone, you don't stop at stop sign, and they need to be, it needs to be put out there, you hit them in a pocketbook. Make them be aware. Somewhere along the line, we as a society have lost the idea of being friendly in a car. You know, somebody's got their turn signal in, you don't let them in. What's backing off and let someone in and be nice instead of having the guy forced, or a woman force themselves into that spot because they need to get there? You know, the state of Michigan has dropped the exams that we used to get every four years or so on drivers, so you know the rules of the road, know what the signs are. We've lost all of that. How many of us have been cut off by people that turn left into a left-hand turn lane, and you can't use the left-hand turn lane for your own turn? It goes on and on and on, and to me, it's the, it comes down to the judiciary side, where they need to start fining people and putting the points on their record, so they, you know, you pay for it, and maybe that'll make them think. I don't see any other way other than the people themselves, even, even the parents that are picking their kids up at the schools are not, you know, obeying the parking and for the world of me, I can't see how a parent takes their child and is loading him in the car from the driver's side to street side of the car with the doors open. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I brought that up at a school board meeting years ago. Have them go in, you know, as a kid, I remember my parents always making us get in from the sidewalk side of the car, and then you move over. I don't understand this at all with people anymore. But to me, you gotta start hitting people in the pocketbook and making them aware that they need to obey the law. Because if we had a policeman, everywhere there's a problem, we would never have a break-in, we would never have any shootings, we would never have any speeders, we would have anything, because a cop would be there all the time. That's impossible to do. It starts with us as people, and I think our city needs to have our judges and our magistrate, stop giving breaks. Stop giving the breaks. We've lost a life now, a child, a young child. You can't replace that, ever. So that's how I feel about it. I mean, we gotta start making people aware and, and I'm included on that too, because you know, I'd sit there and I'm daydreaming when I drive too, okay? Say, "Oh, man, I can't believe I just did that."
Council Chair? Is he done?
Yeah, but let me, who wants to talk? Go ahead, Councilman.
Oh, go ahead. No, Bo.
Councilman Wentz, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, before I address the chief, I want to acknowledge we also have in the audience Tabitha Kerr, mother of Liliana, author of Liliana's Law. Her daughter was tragically killed by a lunch table, it'll be six years this January coming up. She's here with us. Now, me and Councilman Muscat are on the same page, that's one of the things I wanted to bring up. Does the city of Dearborn Heights have the authority to increase points for 10 miles in residential areas, or even on like Ford Road or Van Born? 10 miles over, you get 10 points, or do we have the authority to hit them hard on speeders?
That, those are regulated by the Michigan Secretary of State's office. Yeah. The fines are in control of the court, but the points that are associated would come from the Secretary of State's office.
The city has the fine power, just the fines?
Through the courts, yes, yep.
And what kind of process is that, to increase that or to look into that?
That is something that I would have to work with Mr. Farina to determine who sets the court fines generally. So our involvement is issuing the violation, right, and then taking copious notes and then showing up, the officer showing up to testify in court. A lot of the things that Chair Protam Muscat spoke about very passionately, as far as the judges, that's outside of my control. And I learned as a young police officer to try not to control those things that are outside of our control. But we can, we certainly have conversations with our judges, I find our judges are very good people, and to have that conversation with them and let them know how the community feels about this topic of traffic safety and relay that message to them. So that is something that I would have to work with Mr. Farina, determine who's setting the fines and costs at our court.
Okay, so the point system is set statewide, or is it?
That is set by the Secretary of State, yeah.
But it's statewide, the Secretary of State sets it statewide, so we?
The consequence for it, yeah.
You can also add as a consequence, which I find effective, is the state, you can have them go to safe driving classes, and you can ask a petition to have that class focused specifically, I think, on schools, school zones, school buses. It's usually a four-hour class, and the courts require them as part of a condition of paying a fine. And it's a pain in the neck to go sit there for four hours, but they track you, they report you, and those are what was the Muscat said. But you can, you can add in there that the state, and even the city, come up with specific guidelines on how to approach a school zone, stop signs, and make the tests more concrete, and they don't pass the test, they gotta go back and do it again. And I think that's the way, you force someone to sit for a Saturday morning, or during the week, for four hours, and you go through the classes, and it's a requirement by the court, in addition to the fines.
Council Chair, I just want to make one more statement. You know, those, those are fine, but those are all after the fact. You know, what we gotta do here is we have to be proactive.
You do it when you get the ticket.
Yeah, I know, but that's after, that's after they got a ticket, after they were speeding. We have to keep them from speeding. That's our, that's I think our goal is, keep them from speeding, keep them from getting tickets, keep them from reckless driving, and that's, I think, that's our goal here, not to, how we're gonna punish them, even though I brought it up, but I think our main thing is to keep them from committing the crime in the first place.
Councilman Costin?
Thank you, Council Chair, and thank you, Chief Hart, and everyone. Several points, and I, I am sure, Chief, that our, the traffic department at the Dearborn Heights Police Station is in constant contact with the different schools, and having raised three children, and often being the person to drop the child off, and as some may know, I often am in a rush because I often run late, and it's one thing to run late, and another, if you're the parent, driving and to drop the child off late to school. And there, there, you know, around any school, there's just, the parents are rushing to drop the children off, and so that's a particular issue. As far as, you know, these tragedies like happened with the young man, you know, just a few blocks from my house, it's, but as far as, I mean, I can say firsthand, you know, police officers or courts, you know, letting people plead to double parking instead of receiving three points. I'm sure everybody, I'm sure our city attorney knows, probably 25 years ago, the then Southgate District Court Judge Donald Nitzel helped devise, in all the district courts, what used to have, what used to happen is, every ticket somebody received, they got a jury trial for. So someone would hire a lawyer, if they had 20 tickets, they'd hire a lawyer, the lawyer would file an appearance, he'd get the 19 hearings adjourned, he'd go in on the first one, plead the person, no points, and it, there's no reason to have a jury trial for like a careless driving attempt. So they decriminalized, they made a civil infraction, and only possibility of being a fine, many of the more minor traffic offenses, and that, and some other practices have simply helped move enforcement of tickets along. But, you know, the problem with attention of young children, maybe, you know, running to school, you know, these are areas where the parents are there every day, the children are there often every day, and, you know, I know that you have mentioned lighting is important, everything marked. I know our city attorney and our mayor have mentioned doubling the fine, so that if somebody receives a fine for a ticket in a school zone, that automatically, that the payment of that fine is doubled, things like that will get people's attention.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, what are you doing?
Thank you so much, Council Chair, and Chief Hart, I appreciate you. And to Joey and his family and friends here, I appreciate you guys for showing up here today. Deeply saddened again for the loss of Joey Smith. And I don't think, you know, now as being a new father, it's, you know, you, when I first read the story, I remember having this conversation with Katie, this is, I swear, I could not bear it. And just to address the elephant in the room, I think everybody here knows that there's a petition going around, people are concerned and wanting to have lighting, they want to have speed humps. Just to give you a quick update, I spoke with the Public Safety Department in Dearborn, and I'm sure many of you guys, if you guys didn't notice, have these big orange barrels, green side, that says "Yield" on every single corner across the entire city of Dearborn, not just around schools, but the entire city of Dearborn has these big signs. And residents, you know, came back to the Public Safety Department in Dearborn and stated that that really helped us slow down. You'll see signs today that say, you know, "Slow down," as if your kids are over here. I see those, I go from 25 to 15, you know? So I don't know what needs to be happening here, but I think it's important for us to have the conversation, maybe with our fire chief regarding, if there were speed humps around only public schools in the school district, you know, would that be, you know, would that cause any harm to the fire trucks, to these, you know, when it comes to somebody that's in danger? The next question would be with our DPW director, you know, what's gonna happen when those, when you have to plow the streets? Can these be, you know, put on or removed during school hours? I mean, I think the conversation needs to happen here, where there's, we're showing some type of being proactive. You know, this is one kid too many. Tomorrow, my son's gonna go to school, God forbid, you know, or the child that was at Crestwood who got hit with the car, but he was on his bike and, you know, luckily, it wasn't any dangerous, or, you know, it wasn't any life-threatening situation, but it could have been. And I think everybody, including the police chief, the mayor, the council, the residents, everybody's on the same page. Everybody wants to see something, you know, for the, you know, the better safety of those residents and the children. I think it's great that we can enforce, you know, higher wages and charging people more money, maybe petitioning to the Secretary of State. I think ultimately, though, what everybody here is concerned about is, can we have the speed humps? If we can, what's it gonna cost? Will the district split it with us? I mean, ultimately, this is what's expected from, I think, you know, I know there was an article that came around, I think with the Press and Guide, I could be wrong, but it was talking about speed humps in the city of Dearborn Heights and the city of Dearborn. It went viral, everybody was talking about it. People were calling me saying, "I want one in front of my house." So I think the conversation right now is, what is the next step? Are we going to, are we gonna enforce this? Are we gonna look to invest? Are we gonna put a resolution? Are we gonna ask corporation council to potentially put an ordinance together that states that schools around the school district or around the city that attend Crestwood Schools, that attend D-7, that attend Westwood, will have those speed humps, will have flashing lights, will it be split with the city and the school district, will we ask for support from the state or the county? I mean, how are we being proactive? And I think that's what ultimately, when I came into this meeting today, was, what are we doing right now moving forward? The conversations are great, and it's good to have dialogue, but I think we also need to, you know, make that first initiative. And that's just kind of where I stand with that, Council Chair.
Okay, thank you. So Chief Hart, what's your opinion as far as, because obviously, it's a multifaceted situation as far as speed humps or speed bumps are concerned, there's obviously, A, does it work, and then B, can it be done in our city? What is the cost? What is the problematic situation in terms of the fire trucks, DPW, I know we have our DPW director here, he had some concerns, but let's start with this first process, in terms of, does that work as far as around the schools, speed humps?
So that's why I asked Chuck.
And he's gonna be next.
Yeah, so that's why I asked Chuck to join us here, because it's an engineering piece, it's a traffic study, and I want to say, Mayor, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, right across the hallway, we had, Chuck was generous enough to come down here, we've been working on some programs in neighborhoods on traffic safety, and we got into the discussion of speed humps, speed bumps, whatever they may be. So Chuck is kind of the expert on that, and he, they have to be, you can't just put one on a street, right? They have to be in a series. So there's a, there's a sweet spot in there of, what's the distance between them? And then how high are they, right? And there's a lot of, it's not just as simple as saying, do we want them or not? We all want people to slow down and pay attention in our neighborhoods. But then we're gonna get into when people, if they're not close enough, if the speed humps are not close to each other, then you're gonna have people speeding up between them to try to make up for lost time. So then, a little bit lesser consequence, but now we're gonna have the loud exhaust, the modified exhaust issues as people are speeding between those humps. But those are just some initial concerns that I have. Some things that have worked in other communities that I've been is painting, kind of shrinking the roadway, right? By putting paint on the, a solid line on the street that gives a perception of a narrow roadway, and then people will naturally slow down. The issue with that here is, for the most part, we have our residents, the exception of trash day, you're not supposed to park on the street, but we already have fairly narrow streets in the area. So some of those traffic calming measures, you know, that are in place in other communities may not work for us. It might be something we can look at, you know, certainly with Chuck and TIA. I'm very committed to finding a solution with our community and what fits best for us, but ultimately, that's, that's your job because you are the policy setters, right? But we're, I'm here to support and work with anyone on what, what we feel works best for Dearborn Heights.
Okay. I'm gonna have Chuck Keller with TIA. Basically, their specialty is traffic studies, they've done different traffic studies for the city in terms of different businesses that are open in the city, they've worked directly one-on-one with our city engineer, Aladib, and I've seen some of their reports, very, very extensive as far as traffic safety is concerned. So Chuck, if you could just enlighten us a little bit on different techniques that have been used by different cities that you have worked with that you feel could make things a little bit safer for a lot of our children in the area? Go ahead, we can hear you.
TIA, glad to join you. So, you know, the first thing you want to do here is determine whether or not you actually have a problem in the area, you know, do some study data, see if you actually have speeders in the area. When you're standing outside a room, somebody's driving by, 25 looks a lot faster than 25, and sometimes there really isn't a speeding issue, it's a perceived issue. So that's one thing that you want to look at first. There's a lot of other things around schools. Is the school signing in accordance with the manual? Is the proper signs there? Are they in good condition? Do you have a school route plan? Where are the children supposed to cross at the intersections that have controls at them? Are there proper pavement markings at those locations? Is the sight distance good at the corners? All these things to make the area safer without really having to do, do type of devices or new things that maybe not, aren't that necessary. With speed humps, like the chief was saying, the sweet spot, kind of that they talk about in the industry is having them every 400 feet down the road to get the effect where people don't speed up in between them to make up for their lost time. Some things that- spons tying-
Wait, Chuck, after, after some things, you got cut off, I'm sorry, if you could repeat that, please?
Well, I was going to say, like Chief Hart said, the, the sweet spot for the speed humps is roughly about 400 feet apart from each other to prevent people from speeding up in between the humps and making up for lost time. One of the other things is with the speed humps is you have slower first responder times because they have to slow their rigs down considerably much more than a vehicle, a, a small vehicle like a car in order to burst those humps. I mean, there's other things in, in the school zone, like I said, signing, make sure that's proper, you know, if you have a particular issue with a particular crossing, a lot of violations, maybe you put flashers on your advanced school signs, or you put flashers on the actual crossing signs. But generally, you know, start adding more devices or, or thinking about improving the situation. Or you can use it when you have determined that there's more of a risk or an issue going on in a particular location. I don't know how much further you want me to-
No, that gives us an idea, if you could do me a favor, stay on because we may come back to you.
Oh, I will.
Thank you very much. Next up, I'd like to see if there's anybody from the school districts, I know there's multiple people from different school districts, local school, school districts, that would like to speak as far as concerns they've had and what they feel would be potential things that the city can do and maybe the school districts can do to help, not necessarily eliminate, but minimize this potential problem that we're having consistently with our children. Okay, so before one, somebody from the school district goes up, Councilman Amad, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Chair, before, sorry, before the chief had sat down, sorry about that. Like Councilman, I do mention, we have to be proactive and work on something. It seems like Mr. Keller, it seems all these studies are going to take some time. I like kind of the LED sign that the Councilman once, once brought last time. I mean, is that, needs a study too? It's an LED stop sign? I mean, obviously, that tragic accident happened at night, and I guess, like having, even in the daytime, having an LED stop sign, I think would do a lot. I mean, especially like the stuff that you guys use for, to tell the people how, how fast they're going.
Yeah. So we, we do have speed signs that we can deploy in the area that will, will go off and let people know that they're speeding. I think that really, right now, is, is with Chuck, is to keep in mind, his, his mind is engineering, right? So we want to identify the problem, we want to look at the data, we want to look at, see who's speeding, what the speeds are, the mean speed, those types of things. And those are generally done with the, the line counters that are going across the road versus the speed sign. And I think Council Chair kind of, to set the tone for the meeting tonight is, we're probably not going to walk out of here with a solution this evening, but we're, we're going to be closer to the solution as we sit down with the community and discuss, discuss options. Some of the things that, that Chuck did bring up to keep in mind are some of these sightline issues, right? We've had contact between two police cars and pedestrians and pulling out on Michigan Avenue last fall, and then one since I've been here. So I, I brought Chuck out here to study our traffic patterns at the Justice Center. So we're, we're going to be looking to bring traffic in on a one-way and make one exit point onto Michigan Avenue that you can go eastbound. We cut back a significant amount of shrubbery, special thanks to our DPW crews for coming out and clearing those sightlines up. So that was some of the things that came out of our meeting last week is, what can we do as residents to kind of help this problem as well? And I grew up on a corner of Harding and Merrick and Taylor, and I know we, we took out a large bush that was right on the corner, because as you would look to the right, if you wanted to turn left onto Harding from Merrick, that bush was a huge sightline issue, right? So some things that we can do immediately as residents is, what, from the sidewalk to your home, are there bushes or things that we can trim up that would help us with those sightlines? But any type of, again, if we want to get into the, the signs, I think for the most part, everybody knows they're around schools, I think this is a choice.
We're talking about the stop sign, the LED stop, I don't know if you saw it last time.
The one that was in his hand.
Okay, one second. You-
Like replacing those stop signs around the schools with the flashing LED stop signs. I think it's a great idea. I mean, especially at night, even at daytime, it's going to make people stop because they're going to, they're going to see something flashing in their face, they're going to make them slow down, and they're going to make them stop at the stop sign.
So, so I would say that we would ask Chuck to look at the Michigan Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices to make sure that whatever we do put in, if that's a, a route that the, the council wants to do here, is to make sure that we're putting out the most recognized and one that fits within the standards of that. There are some communities that I've been in and some stop signs that we've seen some crashes at, where we've put solar powered flashing red lights, right? So I thought the stop sign kind of was a, had a lot of LED lights on and it was very bright. But yeah, those, the solar powered flashing lights, I can't remember what we priced them out at Henry Street in South Ann Arbor and Celine, but, you know, those, those could be cost effective as well.
Okay. So next up, I'm going to have members of the different school boards are here. For those members of the public, they absolutely positive will have an opportunity to be able to speak also.
Council Chair?
Yes.
The lady right there said something about stop signs not being, can you come up, please, and tell us where they're not at?
So the comment about the signs in general, did you need my name and everything?
Yeah, just name city and street, please.
Okay. Ashley Holbraukow, I live on Hip Street in Dearborn Heights. My school, my street also dead ends at Polk Elementary School. We do not have any school entry signs in our area at all. I don't even have lines on my sidewalk that my former crossing guard friend here was trying to get, has been trying to get painted for at least three to four years. It was like, what, second, third grade? So five years ago, that we've been trying to get these lines painted and nothing. Now, I know that he was in an office and it's not his issue, but the fact that they're bringing up that we need signs around these neighborhoods and they're, are saying that there are signs and there's not, it just makes me boil because we've been trying to get things in place since before this happened.
Okay. And where have you gone? I'm not trying to be confrontational.
No, I know, you're good.
Where have you gone to ask for the, was it at the school board meeting or?
Trying to think, it's been a long time. I actually pulled my daughter out of the district for safety issues too, so.
Because, you know, the, the thing is, is I know people have come to me, and we've gone to the, you know, police department to have them look to put up, you know, one-way signs or stop signs, no U-turn sign. We've got pretty good success of doing that.
We have not gotten a response at all, even when-
Again, where did you go?
So we went to the police department. I don't remember exactly who we spoke with offhand because it's been a couple of years. We've emailed City Council at the time. I emailed the, just city generic, like, who do I need to speak with regarding this? I've tried probably at least 10 different people and I've never gotten a response, and I grew up in the city.
I'm, I'm sorry if it came to me that I didn't see it, but I really don't remember-
Yeah, I don't.
-a, a request coming to me personally about a, a sign like that, because I sure would have wanted to get one right away.
Right, it's just, it's, it's frustrating when as a city or as a city member, I guess you can say at this point, like a community member, that you're trying to get these things in place to protect our children, and it's not happening, and we're completely being ignored, even by the police department at that time, and the school board, when the school board is actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody from the school district that would like to up to speak? Come on up.
So, although my time as a board member is almost up, I first and foremost, first of all, my name is Najah Janoon. My name is Najah Janoon, and I am on Whitefield Street in Dearborn Heights. But first of all, there are things that we can do, like stop signs and that we should be doing anyways. I know that we have had some requests for crossing guards. I've had multiple conversations with individuals regarding not having crossing guards. I cannot for the life of me understand why we don't have a crossing guard at Riverside at the moment, when I know for a fact there's an individual that has applied and has been waiting to hear back since September. And I, these are things that there's absolutely no excuse for. It takes one person to break a rule, to break the rules. We can't control what the individuals that are driving are doing. We can do what we are supposed to do. Our buildings were not meant to house 1,200 kids at Riverside. When they were built, they were built for maybe 800. We can't control that. The infrastructure is what it is, so what are we going to do to protect the kids? What can we do? If police presence is the answer, then it's the answer. Sometimes I, you know, I see officers, I love our officers, but sometimes I see them and they're there, but I'd love to see them maybe get out of their vehicles, engage with the community members, assist in crossing the kids, assist in, just having conversations with our, with our parents. And again, I'm nothing against our officers because I know that we are short-staffed as well, and everybody's short-staffed with everything. I know, I heard somebody in the audience mention, we should just bus everybody. We're struggling with bus drivers. We are constantly having to cancel bus routes because the transportation company is short-staffed. So what can we do? I'm sorry, I was just taking notes while I was sitting there, but, you know, we just need to have more of a sense of community, and even if that means, and I've, and I've come to council meetings for years and talked about relationships with the city and the, and our residents and, and our police officers and just city officials in general, there needs to be a sense of community. If the, if your residents do not trust you guys or our police department, or, no, they're not going to care. But our, our buildings were not, they weren't meant for the amount of traffic that we have, so guess what? Police officers and their presence is what we need. And I, and I, I really beg to differ on the ticketing part, because I don't think that that's the most important thing. I really think that those relationships are more important than, than a ticket. Personally, I, you know, I was once pulled over for impeding traffic. I had dropped off a, a neighbor's child and she jumped out, full responsibility because I'm the driver. This is years ago at the elementary school, and later on, I said, you know, it'd be nice if maybe the officer that was there, this was years ago, the officer that was there wasn't just pulling over people and, and causing more people to impede traffic. Maybe get out and say, hey, let me help direct traffic, because more people are driving their kids to school. Back in the day, people used to walk. There are so many more cars that no matter what you do, I don't think that speeding is the issue with our buildings, Riverside, Crestwood, like, I don't think the speeding is the issue. There's just so many cars, and everybody wants to get-
In and out.
In and out, and then you have people cutting people off. It's not speeding, it's just far too many cars.
Okay. So Councilman, Council would like to ask you a question.
I mean, I remember well, before you were on the Crestwood School Board, now school board member, Najah Janoon, coming to our council meetings and learning all of us, I'm a Southunder of the, you know, some of the problems, especially at-
Crestwood.
And, you know, I just know, I've been in the city a long time, that the neighborhood population has exploded, the number of young children in that area and going to that school unlike, to, to that, those schools unlike, for example, in the Southend, has, has tripled in, you know, back in the day, a lot of times kids, you know, one mom would, would pick up child one, two, three, and four and drop them off. And, and, but especially your point about, yeah, for, for the police officer coming out and saying, hey, miss, I'm not going to give you a ticket this time, but really the way you should do this is go this way. Well, thank you.
And, and I'm not saying that that, it just, it just takes, there's got to be some more teamwork, and, and there are a couple of things that, even leaving the golf course, that we've discussed having to potentially adjust the lighting and allowing more people to pass, but we understand that that then affects all of the other lights, and that's not really possible. I had a parent ask me, what about, or they were suggesting, what about not allowing left turns during a certain period of time, because then it forced the traffic to either turn right or go straight. The only other issue is, and I know that you've had a resident concerning Berwin, and is that if you're forcing them to go into the neighborhood, then they're speeding in the neighborhood. And she was requesting a, the light-
I drove by that this morning and I see what she's referencing.
So then what happens there is that the stop sign, there isn't a stop sign on the first corner, so then people have the, the opportunity to pick up the, you know, pick up their speed as they're passing her house, get, find, but before they finally reach another stop sign. So, again, there are things we can do that aren't going to cost a lot of money, because ultimately, we know at the end of the day, the only real way is to fix the infrastructure, and that's going to cost millions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Janoon. I received a couple of different emails, but one particular email, before I go to two more people on Zoom, I know Mr. Tim Emery, one of the school board members, and I know Nadia Berry is also on there, she had ran up one of the school, Crestwood, from the Crestwood School District. But Dr. Yusuf Mousalem from the, the superintendent of the Crestwood School District sent us an email, but one of the best comments that I've seen is at the end, and that's a very, very true situation. He says, "I'm sure that the situation at Crest, at Westwood and District Seven is very similar to Crestwood in that there are, they're, they're all landlocked and do not have many options to divert traffic as you would have, as we've seen, of course, on TV and what have you, different school districts where they're further out, not as closed in community, you know, as far as buildings and what have you is concerned." So they have a lot more options to divert traffic. What does exist, I'm sorry, what does assist us in maintaining a fluid process is the presence of Dearborn Heights Police Department. We are, we as a school district can only enforce so much, and when there's an officer present and visible, it does help a lot." So this was his comment. Anybody else? Come on up then.
I'm Katie, Dearborn Heights, Mayfair Street. Please explain to me how yesterday I dropped my friend's daughter off at school. You have a Dearborn Heights police officer sitting at the corner of Pardee and Annapolis, kitty corner, from where everything happened, but sitting in their vehicle, and there's double parking going on. Please, explain that one to me, Chief Hart. Why are your police officers not doing their job?
I'll look into it.
Okay. Ma'am, come on up.
You just manned me? You know who I am.
I, I know, but I have to. So, please say your name, city, street.
Tabitha Kerr. I no longer live in Dearborn Heights, I am a citizen of Michigan. I track childhood injury and death in the education system, whether it's infrastructure, disease, violence, or other rise that are considered predictable and preventable that are classified as never events. In a state that ranks dead last in ethics and transparency with an infrastructure grade of D plus, our school infrastructure grade is also D plus without needs and conditions, and without knowing how many children have been injured and killed in our schools. With a law that states our children are not guaranteed safety in the building, just the building. Now with our state infrastructure, do we know the cause and effect with our roads, our signs, our speed bumps, and the effect that it has with our children in the city of Dearborn Heights? Do we understand that we are burning the candle at both ends when we're paying public tax dollars for our roads, our schools, you? While also paying an unknown amount in injuries and deaths due to insufficient and inadequate policies? Where is not just the people's accountability as we're all over here pointing the fingers at? But where is also your accountability here? Where is community initiative saying, hey, we don't have this, but you know what? We're having a big gathering at a sports center or at the field. Why don't we have volunteers at the corners, at least at the main busy part? And direct during those sporting events? If somebody did that, maybe her son Joey would be here. Do we understand how many children are being injured and killed in the city of Dearborn Heights? Do you? In your own city? Do you understand how many children have injured and killed in the city of Dearborn Heights? That is a problem because we are paying, well, are paying for you to know. Those are our littlest citizens that don't have representation because they are not taxed. But we are. We absolutely are. Now, I, I've been down this road plenty of times, not just in these buildings, but also in the legislature. And there are very familiar verbiages going on and I haven't seen much in the infrastructure in Dearborn Heights either. So really, where's the consistency? Where's the genuine article here? Because all I'm hearing is pretty words, road blocking. Where's the solutions that we put you here? Where are they? Because this should have never been an issue in the year of 2022. Where our infrastructure is failing. And by the way, our school infrastructure is so bad, not just in Michigan, but in the United States. So we don't know the future of it by 2026. So what's your solution with that too? As you're shuffling all these kids to schools with everybody picking them up at the same time? Why aren't we breaking up the times where kids are being picked up in half-hour intervals? Where's the volunteer community effectiveness? Which you have every capability of doing. Every capability. Why does it have to take more than one mother to come here and tell you there's something wrong? And it's not just the people. It's not kids. Kids are kids. Maybe I must have forgot something, but I always knew that the pedestrians had the righter way. And yes, there needs to be some big soul searching here because we're impatient on the roads and otherwise. I'm not innocent of that. I used to live on Williams and Annapolis. Let me tell you, that's been a problem since I was 12. Okay? This ain't nothing new. So what are we doing for her? Other than trying to set up a nice, pretty thing to try to appease her and then hopefully, you know, it all blow over? And then you forget, like you do anything else. Because I know, I wrote a 510-page book and I gave it to the members who were here. Some of you are new, so you're excused. There had automobile accidents in the education system included. Did you read it? Or did you pass it off to somebody else?
Oh, I'm talking to Dave.
Yes, I did read it.
Okay. And where is that book now? Where you can help with this study hall?
So this is the exact reason, ma'am, that I have this type of a study session. So that we can start working on additional fields and issues that could be resolved for the safety of our kids. That's why we're doing this.
Okay.
Well, I just hope we're consistent.
Absolutely.
Not just when something happens. Because these deaths are predictable. They're preventable. They're not accidents. We know exactly what we're doing.
Thank you. Tim Emery from the school board, go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
School board members, what are you, some odd years now? Seen a lot of things in the different districts. I've been, I was kind of hoping, I heard about this thing that you were talking about today. I was kind of hoping that I wouldn't have been invited, but okay. My wife was a crossing guard for, oh, I think around eight years. She used to be down at Party and Annapolis. I know it's skipping, so. Lot of things I see down there, mothers would be picking up their kids or parents, or fathers picking up their kids. What are they doing? Kid hops in the car on the cell phone. At the time, I talked to Dave Kmesik about if there was some legislation we could have when schools are letting out no-cell phone usage statewide. I think that would have been a great start. Great time to talk to your kid when they're in the car. So I see a lot of things around here. I live real off Beach Daily. Trucks, I'm two blocks south of Annapolis. We have a major crossing guard, crossing, school crossing there. They're across from the, used to be the old Pepsi plant, the armor group now. Brought it to the attention of the police many times. Thank God we haven't had any problems in Westwood. We had one child got hit years ago, but that was her fault. She crossed J-Walk. Kid safety, concern of mine. We try to do things in the district here to route traffic around schools. It's, it's hard to do when you have parents that don't cooperate with you. They don't cooperate with the city. But, you know, I, I, I don't know what to do with, you know, when you have parents that don't follow the rules. So.
Thank you.
We, as a district, we cannot, we do not deal with the traffic flow around schools. That's not our responsibility.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Emery. Next up, we have Nadia Berry, another school board member. Go ahead, Ms. Berry.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I'm not feeling that well, but I just wanted to thank you for having this and to let you know that, yes, definitely student safety is a priority. And I appreciate you guys doing this and having this open dialogue and starting the conversation. And I totally agree with you guys on making it where people know that the schools are there and putting the signage up and the flashing lights so people understand that there are schools in that area. Especially on Warren Avenue where we have to have all the students crossing. And we know that busing has been a concern within this district because of the employees calling off or, you know, having to cancel routes. So we're having a lot more students walking and a lot more parents driving. So it is imperative to have the police be involved, to be there, their presence be, you know, the presence be seen by the families, by the parents, the students. And I think when the parents see the officers, it makes a huge difference with their behavior, with how they drive around the schools. I'm not saying to threaten them with tickets, but what I am saying is presence does make a huge difference. And they do, again, for doing this.
Okay. Thank you, Crestwood School President, Ms. Berry. Go ahead, Councilman.
You know, just, just to make, make myself clear, I'm not saying about giving tickets to parents who are picking their kids up from school. I'm talking about in general, people who are just disobeying all the speeding rules, the stop signs, the no-turn-on reds. Those are what I was talking about ticketing people. Maybe they'll start to learn then that they need to slow down. And, and I, I loved her idea about the staggered start times for, that's a wonderful idea. I mean, big factories do that. Pardon me? Well, sure. And I love that idea because, you know, that relieves a lot of the traffic situations at the school. But unfortunately, we can't do that. That's the school boards that have to do that. I'm not going to disagree with you on it at all.
Nothing gets recorded when somebody's talking from the audience.
Okay, but I'm just saying that, you know, she's correct.
I'm going to go ahead and let members of the audience, anybody else would like to come up? Come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am speaking as a resident of Dearborn Heights. I live on Gully Road in Dearborn Heights. I'm also speaking as a mother of a very horrible club. But I'm very sorry, Tabitha, as well as the Smith family and our own Councilman Wenzel and others who may be familiar with what it's like to lose a child. That's unnecessary. I do want to thank the council and Police Chief Hart for having the study session. What's the most important thing you can do this evening? Is listen to what these people are telling you, what the, the issues are. I heard several things, I've heard them multiple times, about signs not being posted at the schools. That's an easy fix and should have already been done. About the crosswalks being painted. They should be painted in a way with a resource that stands out and is screaming that it is there. That's an easy fix. That can be fixed right away. I wanted to tell you and encourage you to maybe take a look at the City of Detroit's program for speed humps. Twenty-two, they introduced it. That's this year, twenty-two. They already have 7,000 of them in their neighborhoods. That's where they put them. They're very effective. And if it's working for them, like with their fire trucks, which we've heard before, I've heard it. When I was on council, I heard that was a problem. Okay? Or the snowplow trucks. Let's talk to them. Find out what's working, right? Because you have to do something. Whatever you do, you can't sit here and do nothing. Okay? We talk about one child is too many. Well, we've already had two in that district within so many years. It's unacceptable. These people will never get their loved one back, ever. It's really incumbent upon you to please be active. And Chief, I see you taking notes and thank you for doing that. Because I believe that you're going to follow up on those notes you're taking. I did want to share some resources with you real briefly. And Chief probably already knows this. Federal Highway Administration Program. Federal Highway Administration has a bicycle and pedestrian program that does offer grant money. There's a place to start and look for pedestrian safety. The one thing that's missing here that I, I heard somebody say and I agree with, we have crossing guards or we should have crossing guards or we don't have crossing guards, but we should have crossing guards during the school day when the kids are going home, coming and going. But what about events at night? What happened? What happened? And I don't care if it's whose responsibility it is. And we keep blaming somebody else and we're pointing at somebody else and it's this person, it's the parent's fault. It's the child's fault. No! It doesn't matter. What matters is that the residents vote us in to do this job, to look out for the community. And public safety is number one always. Okay? So again, take a look at some of the Federal Highway Administration. I have another one for you. One more. State Highway Safety Office. The Highway Safety Act of 1966 first authorized the administration of federal grants for highway safety programs. Okay? So take a look at that. Maybe, again, it's going to take everybody. But let's stop pointing fingers and blaming others and saying it's the kid's fault, it's the parent's fault, it's somebody else's fault. Guess what? It doesn't matter whose fault it is. What matters is we're all part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Margaret King. I am, I'm on Mayfair Street.
Dearborn Heights.
Dearborn Heights. Thank you. I have been a crossing guard or I was a crossing guard. Would love to get back into it, but I think a big issue with the crossing guards is we need support. When I call in and tell you there is a car speeding down the street and during the school zones, nothing gets done. I understand they're short-staffed. I understand he wasn't in office. But I would love to be, I would love to do the job again. I loved working with the kids. That's, you know, I build, I build my relationships with these children. But for and foremost, it needs to be done as we need to have the support. Also too, I have been doing research since Joey's death. From a school building, there needs to be a sign within every thousand feet of the school to let you know that they're in the school zone. There is not. I have video. I will send each and every one of the council members, including the mayor and everybody else, the videos that I have taken. I live two block, a block and a half, a block and a half, block and a half from from the school zone. I don't have a sign. I can drive, take my street from Annapolis all the way down to Mayfair and there is not a school zone sign. And I know that's in a thousand feet of that school building. I don't know if this would have saved Joey's life. I don't know if, but the crosswalks need to be painted. How often are crosswalks supposed to be painted? Because I can tell you when I worked that corner, that wasn't painted and it still isn't painted today. I want something done now. I was at the city council meeting, the first one that I attended. Has those crosswalks been painted? No! Unacceptable. Unacceptable. It needs to be done now. There are speed humps that are removable, so maybe we can look into that too. I know my grandma's community, her condo community, they have them around the community. I don't know if they're 400 feet, but I do know that they are removed and during the wintertime so the snowplows can't get through. Stop signs reflectable? Yes, let's do it. Raise my taxes. I don't care if it saves a child's life. It saves a child's life. It needs to be done. The school zones, solar lights, everything I have said in the past. But, I mean, crosswalks should be painted yearly and make that stand out. These are things that can be done and cost efficient and I'm sure there's grants for it. But, I mean, there's now signs. I don't know. But I appreciate your time and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I presume I'm speak, I'm able to say the statement on behalf of the council as a whole. Obviously, we're not voting today on something like this. But I just want to relay to the police chief, to DPW, to administration and our city engineer and our school districts are here. I'm sure my council, fellow council members would agree with me that whatever it's going to take between all of us to get this thing figured out, to lessen the potential of issues that are happening in the city, I can tell you, because the body that we are as, as council members, we're primarily the budget part. So obviously, we're the ones that have to come up with the money. Whatever way, shape, or form, we have to come up with the money. Whether it means taxing people, whether it means maybe canceling one program, whether it means spreading it out over 10 years, whatever we have to do, I'm sure my fellow council members would agree that we are willing to do our, and as far as the finance part is concerned. And whatever needs to be done, and I'm not speaking just to you, Chief, but again, as I mentioned, to DPW engineering, whatever recommendations between you, the police chief, the traffic, TIA, Chuck Color, DPW, whatever needs to be done. I, I think Police Chief, if, maybe between yourself, maybe our mayor can take maybe the leadership role on this to assess every one of our schools and see what is, because I'm hearing from some of the members of the audience, some places are not painted. Maybe it's, you know, one of the things that I heard, the flashing stop, like stop signs. I love that personally. I think it'd be great. And whatever the cost is, obviously, we have to eventually vote on it. But I, I think I can speak on behalf of our, all of our council members. I think we'd all be in favor of doing whatever it takes to go ahead and move forward in, in, you know, towards the safety of our residents and our children. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like, come on up?
I'm done with you guys. This is a bunch of bull, I'm going to call it like it is because, no, First Amendment, don't even try me right now, Dave.
No, I will. There's no need to speak with that language.
Dave, I can say the word. I don't care that hurt far worse at school.
No, it's not going to be allowed. I will ask you to be, to move on then, please.
If you ask me to remove for saying the swear word, I will sue you for going against my First Amendment rights. Ask the lawyer right now.
Are you going to speak with nice language? Speak with nice language, no need for the swear words, please, go ahead.
I'm sick of your bull, because that's what it is. I am sick of it, because listen, you're going to spend all, ask the lawyer.
That's enough. You've got children in the audience.
Wesley, listen, then they will end up lost.
Two-minute recess.
I want them to ask the lawyer.
You could speak, there's no need to say those words. No need.
Let me get my point out.
They don't say those words.
You know what? Great, you want to talk to my lawyer about it? Go ahead.
We can. God, I don't like this.
All right, thank you. Anybody else would like to go up and speak?
Chair, let's take a two-minute recess, please.
No need for recess, let's go ahead. Who else would like to go up to speak? Come on up, sir.
Chris Scott, Mayfair Street. You know what? I'm almost at a loss for words. And the reason that is, is because we're all adults. These young kids, they don't have a chance to even see life sometimes. I'm a truck driver by trade. I see people every single day, on the phone, reading books, doing makeup, everything that they shouldn't be doing. Seeing accidents, even with ambulances. I'm almost moved to tears because you can't get this figured out. And it took for this young boy to lose his life for us to be here having this conversation. My son's 13, my other boy is five, have a child on the way. And it hurts because I don't know what to say to these kids to try to protect them. I'm 35 years old. I've seen some of everything now. I've lost friends, some to violence, some to just natural causes, but you still don't know what to say to these kids when they lose a friend. But we're sitting here having this conversation about a swear word? No. The reaction to that totally ought to, you know, it's a swear word. Yes, they've heard worse, but at the same time, let's get back on task. We're talking about a kid that lost his life, we're talking about what we can do to try to make things better. I grew up in Detroit, 96 and Davison, 12787 Turner Street, you can look me up. Been there. I just recently found out that Tuller, the next street over, that I used to ride my bike down, they got a concrete, a concrete speed bump. I'm 35. There's no speed bumps in the city of Dearborn Heights around these schools. We can find money for every other thing, but we can't find money to save these kids, even if we have to save them from themselves. We all know that these kids don't pay attention. Hell, when I was growing up, and I'm in middle school, these kids used to jump out in the middle of the street just to see if they can avoid the cars. They're playing games with their own lives. But you have a lot of kids, you have a lot of parents here, and a lot of people who aren't parents, but they care for these kids within the community. They need something done, we need something done. Can't go on like this anymore. It can't. Now I'm going to have another conversation with my son, and I know what to tell him. So I tell, my city council members don't know how to handle this situation, they don't know how to be proactive. Now granted, we voted for you, but it's just as quickly as we voted you in, we can vote you out. And I say that with every fiber of my being, because I'm going to protect my kids, and I'm going to protect any and every kid that's around my neighborhood that I see that needs protecting, whether it's from us, whether it's from other kids, or whether it's from you all, and they don't even know it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Heather Sanders, Dearborn, Michigan. Although I live in Dearborn, my kids attend school in District 7. I can tell you that out of all three of my children, they have attended every school in that district dating back to 2008. Sammy has attended every elementary school. She is at the middle school now, and my son is in the high school. The traffic and the problems around the school is the same in 2009 it is now. And I'd like to invite all of you to join any of the school PTO pages, and you will see daily or weekly, parents posting videos, pictures, complaints about the safety issues. And they're not just the parents that are driving, because trust me, those parents need to have somebody talk to them, a lot of them, I agree with that. But there are police always there, and the car is empty or the person is sitting in it. At best, we have a double or a triple parking issue. So when you're coming down that street, there's a parking there, then there's, you know, the drop-off line, which no one drops off, they just park there. And then there's the line that goes through, which again, when it's dismissal or the beginning of the day, no one, no one does what they're supposed to. Everybody just parks like it's a parking lot. It's either I let my daughter walk from like a block away so that I don't get hit by a car and then hope she makes it there safely, or I'm scared that somebody's going to run into me. I mean, it is insane. And the problem being is if we had a little bit more police presence that maybe got out and knocked at a window and said, ma'am, you can't be here, you need to go. If you look at these PTO pages, these parents are taking pictures, which is sad, but it's like the same car every single day, and it's the same spot that they're blocking. The school can do so much, for sure, but they're also in the school getting the kids that are dropped off early, and I think a better relationship between the officers that are there and our principals to kind of maybe figure out what can be done. At OW Best, Mr. Millet used to get there every morning, like forever early, and he would cross these kids every single day for years. He's now at the high school. So now it's like, oh, man, now I got to worry about Sammy crossing that street. We need a Mr. Millet at every school, but it can't be the principal, though. It's got to be Officer Somebody to stand out there and do that. Ms. Maggie was Sammy's crossing guard. She is the crossing guard, she kept all of our kids safe. There was times Ms. Maggie wasn't safe, cars were trying to run her off the road, and she needed more support. I see all that. So I thought we were here tonight also, I know we were talking about the school traffic, but also about Joey's law, right? I appreciate Councilman Baydew bringing that out and saying, let's talk about the elephant in the room. That's what I was here for, and there was a lot of other nice talking going on. The school where the incident happened is dark, too. I know everybody's talked about, let's do some stop signs and speed bumps, but let's talk about, it's dark there. I was there that night. I left very few minutes after the incident happened and pulled out in that parking lot. It's pitch dark over there. It's pitch dark when you walk out of Best at night, too. So if we're going to talk about stop signs and speed bumps, we also need to talk about a little more lighting in those areas as well. I did appreciate that everybody said they were willing to kind of do this and see what needed to be done, because we have a grieving mother. And if just a tiny bit of this makes her feel a tiny bit better and that her son didn't lose his life in vain, and we can put a stop sign up that lights up, at least maybe when she goes past that corner, it won't be so sad, and it might seem like something was accomplished out of such a sad situation. So kind of think about that, too, when you're making your decisions, because we spend a lot of money in this city on all kinds of things. That would not only help our students, but it would help a grieving mother as well.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the, Director Conrad, can you look into, if you don't mind, please, the situation as far as the lighting in that school, if you don't mind? That's Director Conrad right behind you. Just tell them the school name, please.
Ottawa, New York.
Annapolis, too.
See, I don't put on apples at night.
What do you mean by lighting? There's no lighting.
Streetlights.
Midrow doesn't even have any lighting, their lighting is all pink.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak?
Councilor Chair, I got a quick question.
Go ahead.
I know our, I know our fire chief here, and if you want to answer later, maybe get back to us, but my question is, and I know that, you know, one of the things that are being asked is that there are speed humps, if they're around like, you know, the schools like Polk Elementary, I believe one of them was Kenlock, and it would be strictly around the school district, would that be affect, would that, you know, affect you guys coming in with fire trucks? And how often do you see yourselves, or can you go in a different route which would be avoiding it, if these things were strictly around the public schools in the district?
Sure, we probably would find, I mean, we would route our ways around it. If this is going to make an impact, I don't, the traffic flows and the effectiveness of these different interventions, that's beyond my level of expertise, that's for sure, but if that, if that would be effective, we would certainly find ways to work around that. Is this going to cause, I mean, will there be maintenance issues with the truck? You know, possibly. When we leave the station, obviously, we're intending to speed, like we're going to, you know, someone who's having a medical problem or a house on fire, something along those lines, and so we'll do our best to avoid those places that are going to hit the speed bumps, and we'd find ways around it. And there are times where we are going to have to go that way, obviously. The biggest problem is when we have a patient in the back. You hit bumps depending on the, on the call, you know, that's, they're already in pain, you got a broken leg, you know, broken hip, older patient, that really is an impact. The guys really know every bump in the road, all the common streets around, and how to avoid them, because you hear a patient yell out in pain when you go over that bump, you remember, oh, I'm not going to go that way next time, and you find your way around. So they would find ways to avoid it. But that is, that is an issue that, a concern of ours, and I will talk to Detroit Fire about the speed humps that were installed. I know in Warren Dale, the neighborhood I grew up in, has speed humps now, and I was talking to the guys at Engine 55, and they were, they had some concerns as well, and I'll find out now that they've been in for a little while, how that's, how that's impacted them.
I did like the idea of speed humps that could be, somebody mentioned it, are replaceable.
Removed in the winter, yeah.
So that's something I would love for our city engineer to maybe look into that. In addition, Director, in addition to some of those flashing stop lights, stop signs, I definitely like that one, at least personally.
But removable, what's going to stop the people from speeding when they're gone?
Well, removable for the, for the winter, when there's no shoveling.
I understand that, but.
This doesn't anymore?
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Thanks, Chief, I appreciate you. Just let me know what they say back to you, please.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
Councilor Chair, so just some background, working with the, as the police chief Hart had indicated, we have been looking at the entire issue and the, and the guidelines and the uniform traffic control device with our consultant as well as myself, since the tragedy took place. Whatever recommendations we bring to you will be tailored for Dearborn Heights. It's not, you know, we, I'm talking to Dearborn, Detroit, to benefit from their best-case scenarios, but it's important to know that. So let's start with the issue with the lighted signs. The LED signs are really controlled as to the size of the light, the color, the, you know, the flashing intensity. So these things will have to be tailored to what it is, it's, you just don't get LED flashing lights and put them on the sign, they're really restricted. The speed bumps, options of speed bumps, we have currently, they're not governed by the uniform traffic control device, they're considered quote-unquote "physical features" of the road, they're not actually controlled by the code. Now, options, we have speed bumps, speed humps, or speed tables, and each one are designed for a different speed limit, line of sight, distance.
What's a speed table?
I have a picture of it, if you like.
What's a general concept?
Well, it's actually lower and wider.
Yeah, so Detroit has speed tables.
The ones I saw were humps.
So is there a drop in the road?
No, no.
I was just standing there and I saw speed tables.
Flat top, not a hump, and it's lower and wider.
Oh, I see, so maybe like two inches, three inches, okay.
And they're designed for.
Just never seen them.
Yeah. So each, each item is selected based on the speed limit, the area it serves, the distance, line of sight, stop sign dimensions. So whatever we need, whatever we recommend will be based on our scenario, the layout, the school area that we're in, the speed limit that we're dealing with. So these are the various, and they all have advantage, disadvantage, right?
Okay, so obviously, you'd be one of the people who'd be involved in whatever potential changes that we make as a city. Who else do you feel would need to be involved? Obviously, the police chief would need to be involved.
Police chief, our consultants, you know, TIA, and then our building engineering.
Not to put you on the spot here, but do you think you could take on that role to coordinate everybody together, between you and the chief?
My job is to, yes, my job is to make sure whatever we do is code compliant, it's tailored for our use, and it meets code. I mean.
Okay, so whatever recommendations between yourself, the chief, and of course, we have to speak with DPW and the fire department, you're going to come back to us as a council body and say, this is our recommendations, this is the cost. At that particular point, obviously, the city council would vote on it, and then from there would be implementation.
So cost and impact. So as the chief indicated, there are impacts, so these things will impact emergency vehicles, will impact, I have a list of those impacts, based on other people's, fewer accident, these are the advantages, increased noise level because you're accelerating after you decrease your speed, air pollution, I mean, there are lists of advantage and disadvantages.
Right.
We are looking at all of them, and then the recommendation will be based, so it'll be brought back up to you with a cost and whatever the full solution around each and every school.
But also between everyone involved, you know, I heard certain schools that don't have lines up, certain streets that don't have lights up, so somebody's got to take on that particular, we are the legislative, obviously, part, that particular role to make sure we assess every single school in the area to make sure that all the minimums are there.
I've been taking notes, so things like painting and lighting, the street lighting, we do have a contract with DTE for street lighting, so I've been taking notes, so I will work with our DPW now to see if we have to increase the level of lights. We do have a contract, we have over 3,000 lights.
Do we have, I'm so sorry, Councilor. Go ahead. Do we have a timeframe, when we're expected to see these painted, when we expect to see potential coming on council? Is it a month, is it three months?
I can't speak for the DPW, but.
I know, I spoke with DPW about some of the crosswalks, he said it's a little harder to stick, there's no paint, there's a shortage in paint was the last time him and I spoke. Because it won't stick, and I.
Yeah, this is the wrong time of year, because we're having an issue.
Okay, but whatever, but here's the thing, if some can't be done this time of year, then it can't be done, we have no choice. But whatever can be done, we got to, as a city, start focusing more and more on it just to, for the betterment of the city.
Councilor Chair.
Let me allow DPW Director's.
Well, I want to say, comment on Mr. D, but let, go ahead.
Oh, he's back, okay. Mr. Deep, can you come up for a second?
Well, my question was to him, by the way, about, what's our timeframe?
Okay, so if you could answer the time, it's probably too early to give an exact timeframe now, but. No, but what could we estimate? Three months, a year?
Less, less than three months.
Less than three months? Can we say maybe, maybe the start of the new year?
I have a lot of data, so what we have now is to work with our consultant to put it all in a plan, what you will get is a plan, this is what we recommend, and then this is what the cost is, because obviously, it's not in our budget, right? So we'll have to come up with a.
We'll find that, I mean, we'll find it.
That will be.
Councilman, Councilman, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. City Engineer, Deep, as you did with the bridges in the south end, with everything, we'll all appreciate sharing the email or whatever you have, but your comments on, it's nice to have instead of just somebody here, you know, we have you in-house, here attending every meeting, commenting on issues like this, it's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair, how about we can start with the easiest stuff, like the school zone signs? I mean, this is, I think, should be, I don't know if it needs a big budget, but, I mean, they're missing school zone signs everywhere. I mean, I don't know if DPW can take care of that.
So I guess, I mean, we replace signs when we're made aware that they've been knocked down. If they're not existent now, I think we'd need a traffic control order from the police department to place additional signs where they would be missing, so that, you know, that's in our records and, you know, it's enforceable. If they don't have a traffic control order, then I don't think their signs are enforceable in school, you know, schools, be it stop signs.
We're just saying about the school zone sign, this is, needs to be.
Even if there's a temporary one that's put up until we figure out where the every thousand meters.
We still need to, you know, someone needs to tell us where they need to go. I mean, that's, you know, according to the Michigan, you know, manual, that they, we need to know where to put them. So, I mean, DPW's job is to maintain and install something that, you know, is there. You know, our job isn't to determine where things go, but once thing is, something is determined where it goes, then it's our DPW's job to, you know, maintain it when it's knocked down or.
So can we put it back on Mr. De or Police Chief? Mr. De?
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Go ahead, Mr. De first.
Just a quick comment, Councilman, we can certainly look at this issue on a, you know, like, temporary basis, pending the completion of that study, but that's something that can, we can easily look at. And we work with DPW for the location and the installation of those signs, so we'll take a look at that.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Counselors.
Who wants, come on up.
Round two, I guess. Do we know if any of the American Rescue Fund with the infrastructure, I know Michigan had a grant of $225 million for our school infrastructure that could possibly go into our roads. Do we know if we can use and utilize any of that in the city of Dearborn Heights?
I believe so, but our attorney will be assessing that, but that's a good idea.
And also, a question, I guess, for the engineer. Would there only be one option, or would he be doing multiple options? Because sometimes, you know, just the one option might not work out, and then, you know, families would have to wait even longer. Will there be multiple options for the people?
So, go ahead, Mr. De.
So the intended recommendation will be a combination. It's not one option. There is no magic bullet that will work for every location. So it'll be a combination of things. You know, it may be a hump on this side, it could be, you know, let, stop signs or LED signs in different locations, or a combination of all.
I'd also suggest somebody from the Police Department that's familiar with this particular subject, just the good old school, simple walk-around, school by school, maybe one a day, and just seeing what is physically missing or not there that needs to be assessed. I think it's as simple as that sometimes. Chief, please.
Quite honestly, that's what we're paying TIA to do. And that's conversations that Mr. Kellner and I would have, is to come out and make recommendations on where the signs are going. I know somebody had a question, you know, if there's already a traffic control order for a sign that's not there, the time that it would take to try to dig into whether there's a TCO or not, I can write one. So we want to make sure that everything's done properly, and I think giving you options, giving you phases to phase them in over time, and try to pick some of the, quote-unquote, "easier" strategies to implement, right, that might be the most effective right away. And those are things that we will continue to work on with TIA and Mr. De and the Fire Chief and the DPW to enhance the safety around the schools. And I'll work with Roger as well. We're working on quite a few initiatives right now, and I think that maybe it's time that we bring some type of an ordinance in front of city council, that if you want to strengthen some of these traffic laws around our schools, then that's something certainly that we can look at from our perspective as well.
And we've talked about even, like, starting a campaign, sort of just like, you know, the seatbelt campaign, which is nine out of 10 people now buckle their seatbelts. Campaign in conjunction with insurance companies to do, which would involve the entire community to come together to target the schools, marketing, we would pay the money for a marketing company to market it in Dearborn Heights around our schools. This will change the behavior that Mr. Wenzel was talking about. It's proactive, preventative, but involves everyone coming together. AAA and these insurance companies would be, we would ask them to help fund some of this and market, put it on the TV, put it on social media, and make it a full campaign that goes around the whole city, but involves everybody. Marketing, catchphrases that would catch on and be a product for us. But let the insurance companies step up. They're not, they're part of this. They're part of this to give you money. That's what we.
Thank you, City Engineer. And I believe it was AAA that couldn't make our meeting on Tuesday. Was that correct, Mayor? Yeah, so we did, we did try to invite someone from the insurance industry to join us to be a part of the solution as well. So we'll continue to work on that angle as well.
Thank you, Chief.
Council Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
I got several things here. First of all, you know, TIA, this is the first I've heard that we've been involved with TIA. I don't even know what TIA means. We're supposed to be transparent here. I don't know.
Yeah, we voted for it. You voted in your Senate.
The TIA traffic study?
Yeah.
Well, there's meetings going on. I wasn't aware of any meetings going on we've had recently. You know, I think everyone should be involved with this traffic. Oh, we did do a traffic study. I didn't know it was called TIA, though, okay. But, I mean, we had meetings. I would like to have been to the meeting, find out. As a council member, we're getting feedback from the residents saying, you know, not to dish anybody, but we're not doing our jobs, and we don't even know what's going on. But, you know, first of all, I want to apologize to Tabitha Kerr. There were Liliana's Law she gave to those council members, and I was really passionate about it at first, and we had, me and Tabitha had dialogue. And like a lot of things in the city, and I'm guilty of it, you know, like the flooding, when it's not flooding, it's not topical anymore. And I apologize to you, Tabitha, for not staying on this, and she's very, very strong force on this, and you can tell by her talking, she's talked to a lot of people. And I apologize to you, and I'm not gonna drop the ball with this one. As far as the crossing guards go, one of the residents mentioned that there's a gentleman that's applied for a crossing guard. He's a military veteran, retired, and he's been jumping through hoops to get a crossing guard. And these are paying jobs, right? And for some reason, this guy has not been approved. There's things going on that they say he has to do stuff, but he's already done it. We gotta streamline this situation, because we need crossing guards. You know, I'm a crossing guard, and I volunteer. I don't get paid. We pay, the city of Dearborn Heights pays these crossing guards. So I want to challenge everyone, get off your butts and get out there and volunteer for a crossing guard or get a job, and it does pay. You could hold the Police Department, and hopefully, you won't have to go through the bull crap that this gentleman, this veteran, has to go through right now. He wants to be a crossing guard, and the city is blocking him. Now, I've done, you know, my time is really valuable. I've done some studies, looked at studies, and one of the, when they talk about speed bumps or speed bumps, you can put them all over the place, but I found out that one of the most effective and the easiest where people start, they put them at the stop sign, where that big white line goes across where you have to stop. They put the speed bump there, where when you take, you stop, and when you take off, you have to go over this bump, so you're more vigilant of what's going on around you. Having speed bumps all over the roads, that's something different. And they are removable, they're like giant rubber mats with a big hump in them, and you take them off. Have them there for nine months out of the year, it's better than not having them there at all. You know, they have things like, not LED stop signs, but they have a little flashing light on top of the stop sign that could be retrofitted to all stop signs, with a little solar-powered battery, and goes right on top, and it flashes constantly all day, and then even at nighttime until they die. And, you know, tragically, a lot of this talk is about, you know, cars at school dropping off, and that's a couple hours a day, but that's when most of our kids are, you know, around these schools. But the situation is general speeding, and tragically, this event with Joey happened at night. It wasn't during school hour, drop-off time. Not to discredit or anything drop-off periods and evoke the problems we have there. You know, we should, you know, we voted, I didn't vote for it, but city council voted for $2.5 million to re-sod and take a, fix up a golf course? We better find some money to do this. I mean, we better. If not, you know, heads will roll on this deal. Because that night, when Joey got killed, it was on social media, and I said to my wife, oh, my gosh, I feel so sorry for that family, because I know what it's like. I didn't know it was someone I knew, or I didn't know this situation or all the details. But I drive by that intersection every day, and there's a memorial there. I don't know if Katie drives by there or not.
I'm there almost every night.
Gosh darn it, let's do a, let's do a practice, let's buy four speed bumps or bumps, put them on that, on all four of those stop signs. So someone mentioned, when she goes by there, they'll say, gosh darn it, at least something's happening. Let's not just fall by the wayside, all talk about, like, our Van Born corridor, nothing's getting done. All these different things that flooding, you know, we're handling stuff, but these are lives that matter. Property can be replaced, but not a life.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay?
Council Chair, may I make a comment?
Yes, absolutely. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, just today, this morning, I saw double parking at Party School. This should be enforced with tickets. People should not be doing that. It's a big part of the problem in that area, and we're talking again, Annapolis and Party. Also, it's not just the council, the police, the school boards, for individuals to do, but the whole community has to participate in this. We have to find the funds, we have to work together, and we have to do it very soon. Thank you.
Council Chair, well, go ahead.
Councilman, go ahead, no.
Yeah, and the people who drive cars, especially me, I mean, I'm, you know, former State Representative Gino Palladore, God rest his soul, when I came into the legislature, he had been in two years. He initiated the law that became no texting while driving. AT&amp;T, which this was a few years ago, you know, was one of the biggest cell phone providers, fought at tooth and nail, and they have a ton of resources. They tried to make it, for example, an issue about, well, then the police are gonna be able to stop people, like, as our city attorney, Roger, mentioned, was done with the seatbelts. And I mean, he said that, how many of us have driven and seen a car at the light in front of us not move when it turns green, or, and, Gino, you started to point out, we'd be driving to and from Lansing, see that car weaving, the person would be on their cellphone.
Thank you. Anybody else from administration that would like to speak?
Council Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
I'd really like to see a solution that would stay there 12 months out of the year, nine months out of the year. I know Mr. De, you mentioned something, and I think it was the speed table instead of speed hump. So I'd like to ask maybe Chief Rogan, I mean, I know probably, I mean, the speed hump and the bump probably is gonna mess with your vehicles. What about the speed table? Is that something that would be better?
I just don't know enough about any of them to give a good answer right now, but I would like to, I mean, I've seen, I've seen the different styles, but I don't know what it's like to take a truck over them. I've been texting with some guys from Detroit right now, I haven't got an answer. The ones that have, that I'm getting in touch with, they haven't been put in their area yet.
Well, I believe the speed table is not as high, but it's.
I think they're, are they the same height, but they're longer? I don't know.
They're not as high, Mr. De, right? They're not as high, correct?
No, they're slower, but wider.
Wider. You're gonna drive on it longer.
I would think that that certainly would be better than.
Than just jumping.
And again, our biggest concern is, like, we want whatever's gonna be best to keep everyone safe, too. We got into this profession to keep people safe, the last thing we want to do is see anyone get hurt, like, especially what happened. If, well, yeah, I guess I will set to, I don't know enough about the speed bumps, humps, and tables to.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, so at this particular point, we have, this is exactly why I want to do this study session, just so we could get the process started, get the conversation started. You know, I don't know about you guys, but I like the fact that a lot of the people that are involved in this, the decision-makers, whether it's the legislative part, the administrative part, the police work, DPW, our engineer, I mean, there's a lot of people here that are able to help make decisions that can take the city forward in the right direction for this. So with that being the case, as I mentioned earlier, and I think I spoke with Grandpa there, Mr. Smith, that I told him earlier before the meeting started, this is not gonna solve everything tonight, I knew that for a fact, but just gonna get the conversation started. And, you know, I personally am vouching that I'm gonna continue, as much as I can, to keep this thing moving forward. I would like, you know, for whoever is here from the school board members, whether here in person or on Zoom, to continue to push the city forward, continue to push yourselves forward, the residents, of course, a lot of them, gotta be careful. All of us gotta do better, all of us. City, administration, residents, everybody's gotta do better. Hopefully, we can take this thing in the right direction. Before I end this meeting, I'd like to take 30 seconds, please, just for your daughter and Joey, just 30 seconds of moment of silence, please. Thank you. God rest their souls. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Council Chair?
Thank you.
I'd like you to maybe direct the, everyone involved, the administration, the police chief, the engineer, Fire Department, TIA, to, any decisions that are being made or meetings being held to notify the city council, you know, and everything, because we get questions. I got three or four questions this past week, and they're saying, you know, what's going on? What's this meeting about? And I didn't know we were having discussions already, you know, so it'd be nice if we knew what was going on, so we can tell, and then, you know.